This is for our local press representative. Well, thank you everybody for being here for important agenda. So as is our local custom, we will go ahead and get this started by the President.
Everybody, Valerius. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here again today to conduct the business of the Van Alstine City Council. Again, we ask for your strength, your power to give us the knowledge and the wisdom and the ability to carry out our duties here and our activities as you would see fit. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless our community, bless our citizens, bless our first responders, bless everybody here, and we are so thankful for all the good things that we have. It's in your precious Son Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas' flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one nation under God, indivisible.
Conduct the public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent for a variance to the Van Alstine Code of Works in Chapter 46, Charlotte 2, Division 2, Section 46 to 97, accessory building regulation, and a height construction to allow for a height of 23 feet, being three feet above the maximum allowable height in Chapter 46, finished 1A, building districts, and aerial regulations to reduce the front yard setback. The subject property is situated in the city of Van Alstine, County of Grayson, State of Texas, described as divisions Van Alstine, Lock Creek, Inglewood, 24. The subject property is more commonly known as 240 West Jefferson. Is there anyone here to speak on? Yeah. How about the first guy in the front chair? Yeah, right up here, please, and just state your name so we can get you properly reported. And everybody who has new, go to the post on the table.
I'm Bill Scott, so 354 South Dallas, also 322 South Dallas, and that whole corner. This is the right corner from, so first I've heard of this, but I have others that anybody has a bill right on the street, we don't need another tall arm or whatever discipline on it, but we need to preserve, hold him, and regulations that we have to keep the feel of it. All right? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
I have the order to draw money out of 240 West Jefferson.
Yes, sir.
And I've drawn up the plans, and I just feel like the garage and building in the backyard would be more architecturally pleasing with a little bit steeper roofline. The house has a 12-foot pitch roofline, and I know there's a 20-foot ordinance, but it's going to be very short if I put a 6-inch roof on it as opposed to, you know, maybe a 9. And then there's another one, a carport, I'd like to build in the front, but supposedly I can only build 13-foot wide. I'd like to build 18-foot wide to be finished, because I can accommodate two cars that way.
Anything else?
Nope, that's ready.
Thank you.
You.
Is there any one else? Thank you. I'm fine, let's consider taking the action necessary regarding requests by the owner agent for a variance to Van Alstine Code of Works, this is the problem number four from previous, we'll read all that, and just consider taking action from what we've just heard.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question to the gentleman that opposes? Can I ask a question to you? On your opposing this, what's, aside just the fact that you want to keep Old Town, Old Town, what is like the reasoning behind that? Like, do you feel like that would just stand out, or do you think that it doesn't fall in line with how the houses are built? Can you go a little bit more into depth, or why do you oppose her? Thank you.
If there are new houses built in the area, or if people want to build a barn, if there's other new houses being brought up, there's several that broke, ten feet of broke. There's others that are 10 feet on both sides, and it's still very slow, if you will, as people come in and tear down the old houses, the building houses that are just a dirt lot. It affects everything, it affects the look of it, the feel of everything, and there's a reason why it's capped at 23 feet. I think it's to say that, you know, I understand where it's coming from, but also I think we have to respect the Old Town feel of it. If we don't stop now, it will kind of be something completely different, and that's the heart of the Alstine. So it's not just that I own there, that's not just the only reason that I care about Old Town. So it's like, that's your...
Yeah, that's part of the...
On this, doesn't it have to show like a hardship to get this approved? Not just because he likes the way it looks better or...
Correct. There would have to be a hardship or a characteristic of the land that would lend itself to the, that would require the variance to be developed properly. So considering the unique aspects of the land and why the variance relates to that, it'd be an item to consider.
This is just, this is, you mentioned some, Mr. Planner, you mentioned something about a carport, this is just for the garage and flats, right? Okay, well, this, this right here, if I'm not mistaken, is just for the height construction to allow a height of 23 feet, being three foot above the maximum allowed. So you're just asking for, you're just asking for three feet right now on the building in the back. So if I'm not mistaken, we're just approving three feet. He can still build to 20 feet.
I believe there's actually two variances. There's the, a three-foot variance for the height, and then a setback allowance also. So there's actually two separate variances requested.
Okay. There's nothing to say what the setback is.
Is there additional items on here that we don't have, actually, amount of the setback, or there's no...
Setback would be a 15-foot setback, is that correct?
Yeah, the front yard's 20.
Okay.
We had to reduce it.
So we're going to exceed the height, and we're going to exceed the setback.
The setback's what? Sorry, but... We know what it should is, but we don't know what he's asking for. Did you put on there what, what amount of setback you're asking for, like how much? It is not on here, is it my number?
I think it's, it would be five feet, because 13 is all that they're allowing him for the permit, but he wants 18.
Okay. That was the weird, that's the weird for the, that's the weird for the carport.
Yeah, and that's, the planner viewer told us that that would require a front yard setback variance.
But we don't have to specify how much?
Is that decided?
No, he's asking for what area, I want to, hey, so you're talking about one in the backyard, and he's talking about a different building in his front yard.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, I got it, I was trying to figure out, is it setback from West Jefferson, or is it setback from the property line? Because he was making it wider, how much for the block?
Counsel, based on the way that the item is presented, you're correct that it doesn't discuss exactly how much of a setback variance. So I think the recommendation tonight would be just to consider the height variance alone, and then have the, the front yard setback brought back in a subsequent meeting where the, the amount of the variance is listed clearly in the, in the item. If that makes sense.
Do we not submit that right now and just asking, so he doesn't have to come back?
It may not provide enough notice for the public to determine what exactly they're asking for.
True.
But the, the variance, the three-foot variance would be before counsel properly tonight, or before ZDA, council sitting in ZDA.
So the latter would just consider the height variance, and that is in the backyard?
I noticed that, I think so.
You recommend that we follow...
You could waive it since they already kind of bought it before.
Is there any actions like helpful?
The ZDA also would have the option to, to table it if they would like to consider everything together in parcel, or at the request of the person seeking, the variances, if they would like it considered together, they could also ask ZDA to table it.
I have, on this backside here for the staff report, it does kind of address that though, as far as the setback. Setback to allow for a two-behavior carport, so whatever that setback requirement would be is the amount. We don't have to have a digit there being signed to get it within the coordinate, right? And it could be considered, it says to allow for a two-behavior carport. What would that be?
That, as far as the carport, I'm not sure, but generally, the variances would, would mention the, the base, like they did with the height, which, you can see the height, the 23 being three above the maximum, so you know what the base is, and then what they're requesting.
Ultimately, with all of this, does it even need the law, the legal part, or hardship, or...
That would be a, that would be a question ultimately for the board to answer, but if the board is, could look at the width of the land, and if the width of the land is not allowing, you know, the pitch that he wants, and considering all the other elements, does it sort of match the surrounding? You know, is there something inherent in that land that creates where the pitch isn't going to be able to be anything other than the 23 to build like he wants, that that would be something that would be unique to the land?
Is there?
Look, we table this until we can get a site plan where we know this is located. I don't feel comfortable, or, the way it is here, I don't, we're not, going forward, this may be more, there's some reason it needs to be...
Also help if we need some photos, one that kind of create in your head, and give us a better idea of what you're talking about, where and how to, you know what I mean? I mean, just something, I gotta, I can look it up all day on legal maps, which is what I always do, but I can't really see.
We've got some drawings. Let's see what you have.
There's a sketch, of course, Bureau of Health, obviously, that's still has to go.
Okay, I have these, what I'm looking for is maybe a site plan.
Well, since the house right here, just the garage and backyard, okay, all the jobs.
Here's what we're going to do, we're going to table this for the night, so, Councilwoman, if you can see and have a chance to look at this, as opposed to trying to decipher this tonight. So you can take these important documents, right here, and rule of this. Next lady? I think it's, it's time we rule, table out of five, until we can get some better time, so we can go exactly.
Yeah, you can make a motion to table it, and that'll be on record.
So we can consider it, do some...
Yeah, but then it'll come out.
Do you not want to read his paperwork?
No, we'll read, we'll, I want to talk to you before, so I can table, I really like to, like I say, we like to work where we can, but that's a problem.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we table this till later day. Next meeting. You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, if they're not. At that time, we will conclude the government board's adjutant will move into where the council. We have, anyone from the public who wishes to speak? I have one other comment, Mr. Dennis.
Those on the last one.
Oh, sorry.
Mine are on number nine, I can speak now, or I can speak later, or something.
It's on the agenda, I'm the speaker, man.
Okay, that's fine.
The speaker, yes?
Thank you, I hope all of you have noticed the town, how beautiful it's looking for the holidays.
Yes.
Part of the city and staff people and community volunteers are a committee called Christmas Town, and that's the T-shirt that I'm wearing right now. And if you are a committee member, would you please stand, if you're a committee member, for Christmas Town? And there are a couple that are not here tonight, but we have worked to help give finance to the city with KNEB and some other organizations, and Justin has been amazing, Rainey's been amazing, and we want to thank y'all for your support, and the praise is scattered, so come out, 2:00, and each of you have a bag in front of you, and it is a Christmas Town shirt that we wanted to give y'all, just for our appreciation for y'all, so now you can take your bags down and put them on the floor. So thank y'all so much for being so good at helping the community to celebrate and be the light.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know what we're wearing on the flip.
Right. I'll take it, yes. Mr. Speaker, you're going to address the agenda, so...
I just want to publicly thank everybody that had anything to do with the Van Alstine Chamber of Commerce golf tournament, Councilwoman Marla Butler, Councilwoman Ryan Neal were on, onsite and supporting this, and tomorrow, for those people that really want to support our school and our Special Olympics, if you are available, we are going to be presenting a last size, I don't know, 10-foot check to the Van Alstine Independent School District, the Special Olympic Fund, for $7,000 to pay for every Special Olympics for the year of 2020 by the Van Alstine Chamber of Commerce and the sponsors and contributors. So thank you all very much for your support.
Where will that be?
At the Van Alstine High School.
And what time?
At 10:50 a.m. Thank you.
Is it in the gym, or...
Cafeteria.
Thank you. I'll pick up this in the public, in the hope of, on number three, conduct public hearings, consider temporarily act upon a request by the owner agent through the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as Merwood Ripley Taylor, being a ripper of Block 1, Block 2, SL McKinney's amended division of subdivision number 1, Division number 1 of OPP of Van Alstine. Texas has per flat of record in volume 183, page 351, DPRGCT, being 0.455 acres of land in the James McKinney survey, abstract number 770. The subject property is generally located in the north side of Taylor Lane between North Preston Avenue and North Main Drive. If you, anyone here to speak on that? Thank you.
Hold on.
There you go.
My name is Man Jeffers, I live at 576 North Main Drive, four blocks up the road. My concern is with, first of all, I'd like to know what they are going to do with that land, and second of all, the sewers, if they're planning on putting houses in there. I've got, my neighbor on the north side, has supposedly sold his, some of his properties that are going to buy it into three lots, and on past ten, there's another new house being built on Preston, and we have had sewer problems in the past. Raw sewage coming up from that line running down towards North Main, no, towards Van Alstine Parkway, and I think that you need to look at the, number one, traffic, and number two, the sewer system. You got a quick check that goes into that sewer system from on Preston, you've got other businesses along there on, I call it Highway 5, and, and all the other houses, plus, if, if they do put three new houses on the north side of me, and the new house there, that's four, plus what he's going to do, or whoever got the land, is going to do with that property right there. That is a lot of sewers going in along with everything else, because a lot of the sewer lines from North Main go to that sewer line there in Preston. My property, I've got a house behind me, mine goes from, I live on North Main, it goes all the way to, to Preston, and I got a lady that's on the south side of me, it goes through three, two lots, two houses to Preston. So I think you people might want to look at whether it needs to be, something needs to be done with the sewer line, you got the traffic you have kids in, into there, and that's the biggest concern. And in the past, and I can't give you the date of how long ago, we used to have sewer backup into the house, and there's sewers that comes up, you know, like I said, on the, on that line right along there, and that's my biggest concern, but adding that many houses, and the sewer system probably 50, 60, 70 years old. When I moved in my house 40 years ago, I had to replace the, the old clay pipe and put new PVC in. So those, these old areas of town need to be looked at before you start building all kinds of housing.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Further discussion is on, yes, sir.
My name is James Barnes, I live at 455 North First Avenue, and I live just on the south side of the land Tony Brothers want to build on. My question is, is it going to be one lot, three separate lots, you know, what's he planning on building?
Two lots, I think it's, I think it's invited, no one can say. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Any other comments from... At this time, we're going to move into the executive session. In accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, open views filed between council may meet when they close the executive session pursuant to applicable laws for all items below the executive session. Pursuant to the following designated sessions, the Texas Government Code annotated, subchapter 551 of the council, or entered the executive session, discuss the following items. A, Section 551.1.074, economic development negotiations regarding, I, employee development, and, I, transport and transport development. B, Section 551.074, personnel matters regarding employment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, disband, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, namely, the city attorney. And I would encourage each and every one of you to obey and participate in, because we, we heard, to see what actually was taken in the trouble of the duty hours. City, we're going to resume on the executive session, we'll actually cover, I'd be, we're on the agenda in, A, is, you know, actually taken. As a rule, we, as a consentor general, we usually consider everything at once, but because we have, somebody wants to speak on, never doubt, and we'll move it down, so we will, we, as a consentor general, we will consider items 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10 all at once. I make a motion, we approve the consentor general items 5, 6, 7, and 10.
I'll second.
We have a motion, saying further discussion. All in favor of your hand, and one abstention?
I abstained from all of that, I wasn't here for that, so I...
We didn't need you.
Hi, that's a... I'll take my almonds and the whole hand.
Now, I don't know, we will, consider taking the action necessary regarding passing of orders, limiting of orders, number 551, and number 835, amended Section 30, they asked 31 of Van Alstine Code of Works, is to amend rules and regulations regarding optional establishment and continuation of parks and recreation board. Now, the speaker is...
Yeah, I have a question, so I have down there speaking on behalf, or as a board member and in personal, because I think that it would be inappropriate for me to be my personal board member as a board member, is that okay, or do you want me, is that okay?
We'll take you all.
Okay, because I don't think it would be wrong to speak on behalf of the board of my personal board, so. In contemplation, the city manager and leader of the legislature board is spending our part in the recreation department, and I think that my fellow board members deserve to get the recognition of the value that they brought to Van Alstine, and the city council should be informed of the time, effort, and money that these individuals have expended. But there's also a part of nonhard cost associated with having yet no community involvement in another sector of our city government. This board cumulatively has spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours and time to better our city's parks, this does not include meeting times, however, in the first 90 days that the board was in June, we spent five times to address, to address serious deficiencies in our parks and to contemplate the master plan, which was needed before the city could address it. plan which was needed before the city could address grants or other sources of funding, and that plan was required and had been in stasis for almost a year, holding up funding and grant process as well as any bond discussion. All of those hours were personal time outside of meetings, walking the parks, physically cleaning the parks, doing research, finding grants that would cost cover costs for the park. And I would say conservatively that the seven of those people probably spent at least seven or, at least a thousand hours. I know I probably spent a hundred, I know Katrina did as well. Um, an average wage of fifteen dollars, a benefit to the city of at least fifteen thousand dollars, and I think that's probably a fair enough figure. Further, each board member walks in a signed park every month and brings back healthy and safety concerns to the city manager. And just this month, a bound-in freezer was discovered by board member Amber Edwards, not a city employee, who's an eyesore and a safety hazard. And once again, this is a free resource that saves hundreds of dollars a month to, to the city. Further, we wanted to be really good community partners, and each park and recreation board have made a commitment to support our community, and a park and recreation board have made a commitment to make sure that E D C, C D C, Vasa, nor city council member, I mean, city council meeting never had at least one member at that. So we have, we're assigned, and everybody makes sure that we, as community partners, were at every single one of these meetings to show both support for the other volunteers of our city and also our commitment to our city. The Parks and Recreation Board has been a spark of community cohesiveness in less than a year of serving. The only event ever sponsored by both E D C, C D C, Vasa, and the city through the Parks and Recs Board people was conceived and planned by the current Parks and Recs Board, and it was called Popsicles in the Park. And it was financially sponsored by a member, Dennis Gavitz, which I met before, and myself, financially, as well as many hours from others. Our board in less than three weeks got all these organizations together and had approximately eight people attend with a minimum advertising and absolutely no budget. The Boy Scouts had their part, they had their event at the exact same time, and they had already contacted me, and I'd already talked to them about having the event because they actually wanted us to move in conjunction with their event next year. I thought it was a smashing success for a first-time event. All manpower was volunteer, and not one city employee, and not one city dollar was used, and it was the brainchild of Maria Hixen-Greman who would be here except for her, but her son has a music program tonight. One of the major concerns with citizens of Van Alstine is a fear of losing the hometown feel that makes our town so special. Less than thirty days ago, our city manager tasked us with planning a spring egg hunt and looking at how we could support the park department and adding fun items to the existing Fourth of July celebration. Several board members had dealt into securing items and, and already gotten people to donate much of what we needed. And prepare people for those events, and those board members now will have to go back to those people explaining their reason to the Parks and Recreation Board. Further, the board was spending their own personal funds to build a float to be in the Van Alstine Christmas parade, to be a good community partner, a board that would no longer exist at the time of the parade. And I am confused when it was never a conversation in any meeting about the city manager's decision to suspend our board. It would have been a great common courtesy to discuss any community decision with us and considering that two weeks after our last meeting, this decision was made. We've never been given a reason, instead, we were asked to secure support for an egg hunt on Fourth of July and to build a float. And I wonder if it came back, is if it is no longer active, Hoover, and there is no community support, will be initiated for these events, and will city have employees to staff these events? In turn, I'm not sure that the board really ever has a chance, had a chance, if we even have seen as a value to the board. Our current board has someone on our park with forty years of park and tournament experience as well as contacts with officials of the Town Lake Park in McKinney and other recreation parks throughout Texas and the Southwest, and has been more than generous to make any kind of calls and contacts on our behalf. We have someone that's a turf expert, we have someone that has decades of experience in excavation and landscaping, and we have someone with private and public experience who helped raise one point five million dollars in donations for a round profit in twenty nineteen. We also have people that are new here wanting to get involved, and we also have someone that has three generations of historical perspective for our board. And since there won't be another board meeting, I would like to take the chance to at least name the people that have served these last nine months. Greg Carroll, who was our vice president, Dennis Gavitz, who's known to put books on the ground, and he's actually put dollars out of his pocket, Katrina Arsenal, who walked in thirty-six degree weather in the rain to look at parks, Kim Flipp, who loves, who has come, Amber Edwards, who someone knew, had new ideas, Maria Hixen-Greman, who has three generations of history and sometimes had to teach us the history of Van Alstine that we did not know. And also, I'd like to give thanks to past member Marisa Derrick, which when I came on, gave me a spark to be excited and don't know what we're doing to, um, she was very determined for rural sports, and I thank her for all that she did. So, um, and then that is, as a board member, as a personal note, um, I think there's been missed opportunities. Almost a year ago, the Parks and Recreation Board wanted one park to be our win, a park that people saw as an improvement that would be noticed and picked, that pick was towards people in the park. Funds were offered and the city did not take them. And how do I know? The reason I know is because I actually offer them. I tend to be more private and give my giving. It may not know, many may not know that the Boyd family has been very thoughtful of it. And I'm not boasting, but I think people need to know that we do care about the city. We don't shout it out from the mountaintops, but some of the things we've done for Van Alstine is that we had given, we gave the Steve Mudd to Stark Boys, now known as Fall of Law, which was originally gonna be a mini round talk of the Judge, Ante, and Art Show. And we continued to support that until it became Fall of Law. We were a sponsor of Fall of Law for many, many years until other people stepped up. We have donated to the I S D in both items, in, both inside and outside of the, both high school and middle school. We also donated the whole computer system from the library, which included all hardware and software. We brought in our staff to install the, um, all everything, have everything configured, the whole system, and at the time, the city could not afford the internet charges, and the Boyd Family Trust picked up those costs until the city could budget to be able to cover that, which I believe was almost a year. The total cost of that project was over six figures that we gave. The Boyd Family Trust decides every Christmas where to spend charitable donations, and we usually give towards physical items, not money into a fund. Some of the paths have been the library, which was at the time really needed because there was a lot of people that did not have internet out here or could not afford it. We did a, um, uh, dormitory for an orphanage in Africa, and we also supported the education costs and immigration of someone who came here who is now in the U S S and bought in two, twenty eighteen, and announced in twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We are both investors and owners of the Rock, Rock and Sea Trash Pandas, which is a minor league baseball team. And obviously, baseball and softball is important to us. And last year, we were approached to, by Grayson College, to donate lights to the Grayson College Soft Bill, and because we had asked, we did so. And those lights allowed the college to hold money-making tournaments for both college and community, being a positive revenue stream and not just a draw on the college. The donation was the largest living donation ever given to the history of Grayson College, which was founded in nineteen sixty-five. That field, this just recently was named N F C A Field of the Year, that's a national award, and it's also the junior college softball field of the year. And that brings me back to Van Alstine. Ten months ago, I volunteered to cover the cause to do landscaping on the, on Dorothy Fielder Park. And wherever it may be, we can walk out there, it's still not done. And I will say, as a board member, it's frustrating for me, and I think that there's been other things such as a gazebo, there's been stuff that forced some more. And we would, the trust would have been more than willing to do any of these projects, but we weren't taken on by it. I hope in the future that Van Alstine won't miss, won't miss on those opportunities. And I am frustrated that something that the board decided ten months ago, we did not get. Dorothy Fielder has had some, but it, it's not what we want it to be. And more people see that, feed that park than anybody else of all ages. When they walk in City Hall, when they drive through town, it, it could have been, it could have been a shining example. We could have bring down all the landscaping, we could have done everything. Anyway, it's a missed, it's a missed opportunity, and when opportunities are not seized, those dollars, man-hours, and ideas will move on to another city, another board, another project that will welcome the help, welcome the help. A giving heart will find somewhere else to give. I did not apply to the Park and Recreation Board to have something else in my resume. I did it because I cared about the city, there were extremely dangerous conditions in our parks, and we were dire straight to some T L C. There were eyesore for visitors, and they did not meet the needs of our citizens. I think our board has done an amazing job, we give them gold stars for carrying and physically giving it done. I know that there will be an awesome, they will be awesome in whatever endeavor that they choose to spend the time, money, and passion. Those entities will be blessed by their participation. It has been my honor to serve them. They each have my gratitude for serving in thirty-six degree weather when it was raining, and hundred degree weather on vast houses and popsicles. They have never shirked their duty to this community, and they have given from the heart. And, um, I actually, even as board member, probably support the spending in because if we don't have everybody on board, then our board will never be a success. So we either need to be, want it to be there, or we need to be gone, because if we're not, if it's not benefit, it'll never be a success. I appreciate that you've time. I hope that if you see the board members that were not able to be here tonight, because we only found out less than ten days ago about this, I hope that you will take the time to thank them, because they really did put in hundreds of hours, and they did walk in rainy, cold weather, I think actually, even asleep at one time, and they walked when it was a hundred and fifteen degrees. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor. Well, this really is a public call back. Okay. That was, uh, I don't know. Actually, we're handling, well, can we consider both of those the same?
Yes, uh, Mayor, you could consider those together.
I would, I would rather, uh, time for, um, I'd rather consider one than the other, because I believe that they are two, two separate deals. Um, one is admitting the ordinance, um, regarding optional establishment and continuation of the Parks and Recreation Board. So that means it is optional, which means it can come back at any time, or be put back together as necessary in the event that we need it. And then the other one is just, are we, are we gonna take care of it at this time and bring it back later, or what's, so I would like to keep them separate. In regards to what Julie said, there is a lot that the Parks Board has done. Um, I agree that they have not been out in cold weather, but even back when, uh, oh, back twenty years ago, well, Zach's fourteen, so probably ten years ago, when, you see, they had no money, the Parks Board and Vasa were out mowing the, mowing the ball fields and everything else, um, back then, of course, more had just been built. So there's, there's no, in my opinion, this is not a reflection personally on anybody that has ever served on that board since the time of its, its inception. My personal opinion on this, and I think it's necessary to say, is that we, we knew that this time was coming, because the same thing happens in McKinney, the same thing happens in, in Salina, um, when you have a Parks Department that takes over, and you have a Parks Department that starts running, and they become a profit center for the town, and they start taking over new sports, which will happen, no, no offense to Vasa or anything else, and the great work that they do. But when you have five thousand houses come, the Parks Department becomes an integral part of that. So this is, I believe, is just the first step in that transition. So nothing against any of them, many wonderful people in the twenty years that they do.
It would have been nice if we would have had a discussion of their Parks and Recs and not, I mean, Dennis spent time, we were told, not thirty days ago to go forward, and we've actually spent on time making inquiries, going with the stuff like that, so I think it could have been handled.
So also, remember, we now, just in the last month or so, separated out a whole Parks Department. And to echo, I think, Thomas's sentiments, when you guys volunteered last year, you did so much work, and I don't think there's anybody here that would, uh, give you ever, to, you know, fill it so you could, y'all, everything. And I actually envision, and more things you're gonna understand, is that we have a park come down, and there are gonna be hiccups. And the desert will keep, the, the what? The wisdom and knowledge from the people that are involved, you keep having input. And then there may be a need to this, because we need to get what we have going with this, with our own park, and see what our needs are. I think, but hell, we don't know, we don't know, but we, this is our first growth step, and I, I do, most of our stuff, I think, we all care some pain.
Well, may I say something? I think that this is also, I mean, I get, I'm not, I think there's been some missed opportunities, but I also get that this is Keep Van Alstine Beautiful, who used to do recycling, and now we have recurred recycling. I mean, you can either take that as a fact, or you can say, Keep Van Alstine Beautiful made recycling a big enough deal that the city moved to have incurred recycling. You know what I'm saying? So I mean, I'm not that, I'm just, you know, I wanna make sure that the people that put the boots on the ground got the recognition tonight, that they should.
I just wanted to encourage everyone to look at what it actually is, not make it more than what this move is. The park advisory purpose, the board's purpose, is to assist the city manager. The board did a lot of legwork, and we didn't have these employees, kind of echoing what you guys said, but, you know, it was needed, and we did do a lot of work. Now Justin has kind of taken over, um, we paid employees that worked with Justin, and when situations change, and if the board, you know, needs to be reorganized at a later date, then it can be. And also, just encourage every citizen, when you still have the voice, you have to come and counsel anyway for parks, so it doesn't take away the voice. Anybody's welcome and encouraged to speak. And make the decisions.
So, uh, my, I agree with everything that we're saying there, and as we grow from the city standpoint, you gotta have, uh, paid staff to be able to handle the parks, to grow through the parks, the beautification of it, the amenities, everything that's, all goes with that. But very similar to how we operate the C D C, very similar to how we operate the E D C, where we have a paid director, and then we have, uh, city members that volunteer their time to be able to help the director with the stuff that they do on a, you know, day by day, week by week, month by month basis. It's the same need, I think, of what that needs to happen with Parks Department, in my opinion. So very similar, I like how we give this opinion, my opinion is that I see where this is going, and we have to have that in a parks developer and a park, you know, a paid employee, but I, I don't see the need to get rid of citizens to help volunteer, to assist or advise, not lane anymore, but the Parks Director, and then the Parks Director reports the lane. So that's my, my two cents about it, and that, that obviously would need to be redefined in the ordinance and redefined on how the board operates and, and everything like that, which, going back to Katrina's point, it, it does, it just, if you amend the ordinance to allow it or not allow it, then you give time to be able to construct, uh, a citizens' board for people who still volunteer, because I believe they give the best input on the, the parks in general. I mean, I can just tell you that my wife and, and my three-year-old, who she takes out to the parks, you know, almost every day, she comes back and tells me ten things about the parks that I never would have known. And I guarantee you, even somebody that's paid that's just out there driving the parking lot, or just walking the path, wouldn't know, because they don't have a three-year-old out there playing here or there where there's pitfalls. So I'm in support of keeping some sort of board in place that is advisory to a park developer, but maybe defining that, suspending it right now and defining it and then opening back up, so that's my opinion.
My suspicion is there gonna ultimately be a need for a friends of the park tied toward that.
How do you want?
Which goes on.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, we call it a parks board, but we definitely have some assistance.
I think it'd be a support group, because right now, I don't think even the Parks Director will even know what the.
Yeah, so there's gotta be some, it can't just be this and then nothing, and then the Parks Board especially to pick that up and. the Parks Board especially, to pick that up and, and make it better, right? Like, there's gotta be some sort of transition in there, and then some sort of advising to the Parks Board Director to be able to help continue maintaining these parks, and doing kind of what Su-Lin talked about, which was beautifying them and growing them, and doing all the things that we need to do, which we, we have talked about a ton, and I've even been a little frustrated with the fact that, you know, we've talked about these things, but there's very little development in them, or, you know, it takes a lot of time in between when we talk about it, to when, uh, there's actual action, and I get money is a big part of that, and that is a big deal. But if we were able to not just make them an advisory board, but make them a board that actually can take action and do the things, raise money, do the things that they want, then that, that just kind of creates a department almost, which is what we're needing.
Two things, right, on, on your point, yeah, twelve taken. First thing that's happened that is, uh, helping facilitate the change is that we've divided Public Works into two components. One is streets, water, sewer meters, uh, and the other component is facilities for parks and recreation in downtown. I included downtown as a separate element, because light parks downtown is important to our future. Justin Johnson now heads up the facilities, parks and recreation side. He has two and a half employees as of January first, he may add another, or ten person. That's kind of our first step towards what you're talking about. They become a paid advisory board, if you will, they're the eyes on, they're in the parks every day, they're mowing the grass, they're cleaning the restrooms, those kinds of things. Uh, the second thing that took place is, in the last few months, uh, the council approved a community development fee of twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars per residential household, or for, um, three thousand square feet of leaseable space in multifamily, um, or commercial space. Right now, we have five-hundred-and-forty-four homes that are under, moving dirt currently in our city, and a large portion of those will start paying into, um, a fund that's set aside for parks and recreation. So, the goal is to get Justin up and operating. He becomes the facilities side of parks and recreation, and I'm hopeful, by the time we reach budget time, we can plan to stand up a Parks Director in our city or Parks Department. So, we'll get there, we'll have a trained facilities group who's been doing those parks things at that time. Now, I did oversee, um, a very, very large parks and recreation business aboard Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton. We ran a recreation program that would've been on par with SC, or UCLA, or Baylor, or anyone, with football, baseball, all of that stuff, so it doesn't fall on deaf ears. And I wanna make it clear, I'm greatly appreciative for what this Parks Board, and previous Parks Boards, have done, and the financial contribution that, uh, Su-Lin and her husband have made to this community. But here, we're gonna have our finances. There, when we stood up our, not stood up, when we ran our Parks and Recreation Department, it was so substantial that we had to have an advisory board, and we separated it into a multitude of advisory boards, because we did so many large sports. So, I, I see the need to have one, for now, to get us from here until our next budget year, I would like to have a group of people that serve as a, a working team, an advisory panel, if you will, but we don't have to create an agenda every month, we don't have to keep minutes for a working group that can meet in my office at will, uh, to work through issues like the development of the downtown park, or North Park, or where we wanna go. So, um, I've shared this in components, whether I addressed it clearly and in appropriate protocol, you know, um, probably not, you know? I have a lot to do, and sometimes I don't do it all exactly right. I think this is the right approach, I think, um, it's not people-driven, this decision, it's not that, uh, these two people and the rest of the Parks Board are doing anything wrong, they're not. We have a lot of amazing people in this city that give a lot of their time, it's just time to make change, and that's why I put this in here.
I would like you to motion to pass the ordinance, amending ordinance number five under line of the ordinance, take thirty-five, amending section thirty-three line of code of ordinances, amend rules and regulations regarding optional establishment and continuation of the Parks and Recreation Board.
Motion, if you're second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, or in disapproval? And all opposed, right hand? And all saying? Out of ten? Just consider taking the action necessary, uh, according to previously described, uh, lot from, uh, three, seven property, during a workday in the north side of Carolina, to put a real pressure on it, and working drive.
Do you have any, uh, different things that you can talk about?
He just said, uh, seventy-seven.
No, there's...
Okay. Well, 'cause I'm gonna go back to the gentleman that talked about the sewer and everything like that, 'cause that's important to this property, right? And I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask Lin, um, would they be tapping into that same sewer line, essentially, that they're gonna divide this into two lots?
Yes.
Do we have any plans currently?
We just finished upgrading the line in Van Alstine Parkway that ties into the one in Preston, and then Justin, with all the work streams, keep eye on each one as it fails, and then, we just redid the one in Jefferson, West Jefferson.
Yeah.
So, if, if there haven't been reported problems on it, it just hasn't come up to the top of the list yet. Eventually, all of them get replaced, but...
Well, and so, that's my biggest concern, is eventually they'll all get replaced. I mean, I'll just give you a little two cents, um, my mother-in-law lives on Nunley, and the sewer system that runs, uh, north and south on Nunley, you can smell the backup sewer on the north side of where she's at, and I don't know if you're out, there's a cross street right there, but, uh, so, I would be very hesitant to say somebody can come in there and start building two, three, four, five lots, you know, houses, right there, with what the current system is. Uh, and I kind of feel the same way about Main Street, that if we were like, hey, this is gonna get done in next year's budget, and it's good to go, then that makes sense to, you know, say, hey, let's put three homes, two homes, five homes, whatever, how many homes we're gonna put over there. Uh, but to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense right now, to divide that into lots, so that's just fine.
Not asking for variance, I mean, he's just asking to split a lot into required, what we require, right? No, anything answer on that?
Counsel, um, the, the issues of what exactly is gonna be built on the land, or what can be done with it, um, those may come up at a later time at the permitting stage. Right now, this is just a question on the dividing the land from one lot into the two lots. So, the other issues, the permitting and building, may be dealt with later, at, at, when the actual building, uh, plans are submitted and things like that.
Could it deserve a single-family?
Yeah, that's misstated. It's actually, um, it is zoned two-family. It was zoned, um, in two thousand and five for two-family, and the replat to divide it into two lots was actually approved in two thousand and fifteen. It was just never filed. Um, so, once it goes unfiled for a year, it voids the replating, so it's been sold from Duncan to Miller, and they're bringing it back to have the replat approved again.
Approved, and now, I think it's over the middle of here, and not married.
Yes, sir.
But you said it's, it's not single-family?
No, it is two-family. Yeah, two-family residential duplex zoning.
So, they can split this lot and have a duplex under duplex?
Mm-hmm.
If, if we go that far. Today, we're just approving split.
Yes.
Wait a minute, but if we approve, if we approve the splitting of it, it's already zoned that way, they wouldn't have to come to us to get approval to do a duplex, it's already zoned that way, correct?
Correct. It wouldn't affect the zoning, but it, once they actually started pulling the permits, all the city's permitting requirements would, would have to be satisfied at that point. But the building, sort of conjecture at this point, is just dealing with the splitting of the land, and the splitting will not affect the zoning, it'll stay with the, the duplex zoning that it currently has.
So, right now, they could put one duplex on it, but if they put in two, they could put two duplexes on it?
They could put, uh, I guess, a duplex on each lot, or however many, yeah, however many would be permissible with the lot size.
So, now we're not talking about two homes, we're talking about two duplexes? So, they can already put four families on that base?
No, they, yeah, they'd have to comply with whatever the city's, um, zoning is, um, so dividing it, um, may allow, depending on the size, that would dictate whether or not, what they're allowed to put on it, but that would be, yeah, right now, the, the only matter before the council is just what, splitting the lot from one into two for the request. So, what may be built on it later, kind of comes up in the permitting stage.
But is it with the split, like, what would the other parcel be then? Like, what would the other piece of land be zoned at, if it's split into two lots?
Assuming that it's gone through the plat review process in P and Z, um, it, it would have had to comply with all the city's requirements for that review.
Right, yeah, uh, yeah, they, they dedicated the north half of the right-of-way, about twelve-and-a-half feet, to finish the complete right-of-way, and all the lot sizes match the current zoning requirements.
Oh, staying to family?
Mm-hmm.
So, splitting it, so, stay within the limits for duplex?
Yes.
I need pictures. I can't see the area.
Well, they don't have pictures, 'cause they don't have room buildings yet.
All right.
But i- if they do come back with all the, uh, permitting and everything like that, we, trying to think, we, we wouldn't have, since it's already zoned that way, um, and with the new legislation, like, we wouldn't have any, what am I trying to say? We wouldn't have any objection, essentially, or, or ground to stand on to say, no, you couldn't build a duplex there, right?
Assuming that it otherwise met all the, the requirements for that.
Yeah, so essentially, I, I know what we're voting on now, but if, if we voted on it, they can essentially do it now with two duplexes rather than one, without us having a, a ability to object to it.
That, that's my understanding, not having been at the P and Z, I guess we're hearing that they, they complied with all requirements for the, the replat and the split, so it would be permissible to build, uh, a duplex in that zone.
And you build a duplex there right now? Two duplexes.
But if it was split, it is a duplex, I mean, it's just in the area.
Correct.
And then the other one around the corner, you said it was joined in two, double?
Go ahead.
There's other ones coming down the road in that same area?
Well, it is, um, for a regular term, um, what's our exposure on precedents being set, seeing how our predecessors in two thousand and fifteen already approved this exact same thing once, it just, it just was never filed, and they're just coming back to do it again.
That, that would tend to weigh heavily in, in favor of the, the plat being granted, because plating is, is a ministerial act instead of a legislative, and I believe what, what you're hearing from the P and Z review is that, uh, city staff agrees that it meets all of the city's requirements for that replat.
Thank you. Anybody from council here to entertain a motion on, you know?
I'm making a motion to approve the replat as stated in, um...
Have a motion, if you're second.
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, or in disapproval, right hand? Any opposition, same side, right? Three to two. Out of twelve? Consider taking the action necessary regarding the continued continuation of the Parks Board.
I'll make a motion, uh, to suspend the continuation of the Parks and Recreation Board at this time.
The motions are second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, or in disapproval, right hand? Any addition, any abstention? Out of thirteen, consider taking the action necessary regarding the site plan, if you manage to turn, located at eight seventy-five South Central, South, in, 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 press for. So, is this just an amendment to their...
You previously saw their zoning case, now this is the site plan of what they're gonna build.
Okay.
This shows the building, the setbacks, the fire lanes, paving, the entire site.
Yeah, the packet version is nasty.
So, that's what I want.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I need some pictures.
I can, I can go.
There's a picture that's out in the P and Z.
The professionals got the good pictures.
Yeah, thanks.
We're really just figuring this?
Well, that's, that's, uh, twenty-four hundred thirty-six sheet, you're getting a lot.
We'll retrieve a larger copy of the plan. I think that's upstairs, so it'll be a minute.
I mean, are we just really, because this one's gonna be blocked anyways, so it's just really, that little...
No, that's a, that, I was gonna say, this is, uh, regular sized, drawn sheet, you just have to...
Can we just table this out, and then we go on to line one?
Absolutely, you can, you can choose, yeah.
Yes. Can we hear, or she's probably getting a vote?
We're gonna come back to it.
Remember that.
It's okay.
Don't worry, they weren't taking that.
Read it, read it out.
Before taking it, we have no patience, I have played, you know, something, yes. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Counsel. Uh, as we started our budget presentation last, or accumulation last July, uh, we had known for a morning of some of the projects that were happening in the beautiful cities in Austin, so our budget has changed, uh, the board has made the recommendation that we hire an administrative assistant, an executive administrative assistant, uh, so that we can get Mr. Williams out of the office and move more of the things we want to do, like One of the things we want to do, like, bring businesses to town rather than clarify ideas. So you should have three pages in your packet. The first one is the preliminary FY19 P and L, which shows we had an income of $1,000, which when we originally did the budget, we were supposed to have a loss of $36,000. Obviously, when we moved the revenue to actuals, much better number. You should have a funny little sheet that shows the amended budget with some little yellow lines on it. What I did was I took the 12-month trailing actual numbers, put those into the revenue lines, and then took the amount that we're going to assist their, excuse me, hire our assistant, and took that over the remaining nine months, which shows we have then had a loss of year-end $29,000, which is different than we originally approved, which I think was $10,600, I think, or whatever. Yes, $10,000. So we're asking for the amendments so that we can make the higher add to the budget. Once again, we're spending the CDC's money, not the city's money. The O A, the O A's been bringing that up. Currently, we have $288,000 in the bank from numbers. So we're not going to be spreading all this across, if you will. Any questions, any council?
The first number that you mentioned, you all originally budgeted for a loss, but then you said a different number?
If you looked at the original...
Oh, income, negative $34,000 for revenue, $10,000 for loss, and now it's going to be $29,000?
Now that we had the revenue, the actual revenue for FY19, we actually showed we had $1,000. We had to come quite far.
Yeah. I just, I don't have to pay you that little yellow line.
Okay.
You don't give us any of the good stuff?
It's probably in there, it's probably interested in the market. I apologize for that. It should say FY20 amended budget on the bottom.
I don't know, it's so small, Chris, I don't know.
It's the reason why I have trivalules, so I can see all those fine tiny numbers.
Make us do it too.
Yeah, you can do it.
I don't see that.
I have a good option.
You said it was a separate section on the bottom, that's one of these? How many pages should we have?
You should have three pages. Should be the balance sheet, the profit and loss for FY19, and then the FY20 amended budget.
It doesn't say amendment, but I'm seeing that.
That's the balance sheet.
That's the balance sheet.
So entire, I'm not going to, that's what I'm saying.
Will we have a simple?
Yeah.
You might, you don't see that very easy, and look at the yellow stuff.
Interesting. Any questions, concerns? Do you have any objections? I'm good. I'm good.
Any questions for council? Anybody have a, any candid motion?
Making a motion to approve the amendment to the balancing CDC fiscal year budget.
Have a motion, is your second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the right?
Uh, no.
Any opposition?
Thank you, council. Thank you all for everything you have.
Out of fifteen, consider taking the action necessary regarding community development program. Any more, your big one, that?
Yes, I just need a PowerPoint, huh?
Jennifer can give you two places.
What is wrong with that?
Yeah, well, a few times she only has to make two places.
I don't know if I can go in with it now. Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Basically, last year, I kind of presented our capital improvement program to you, just catching up with directions on the floor, and really just a portrait of what the CDC has spent in community funding, business funding, that sort of thing. So we caught up the same last year. This year, basically, I'm just going to take you through what we did in FY18, '19 with the rolling through. And so we'll start with our parks. Actually, we only had two requests this year. We funded both of them. One was the actual bridge replacement at Forest Ward, that the city did the labor on, we paid for everything else, just over $12,000. And then we replaced the playground safety material at Eastfield, the Giddles' Park. Total, to date, we funded 17 major projects at just over $260,000. Year-to-date, we spent just over $15,000 on parks. Community funding on the business side, so we have a facade grant program. Basically, anything that's connected to an actual existing business, awnings, glass, et cetera, if it's going to improve the look of the business in the city, we'll consider the funding. We approved an awning for Quilt Facade, signage for Asian Cuisine. We did three separate projects to help get all the city ball back up to shape, which showed the brand was pretty good. We did the facade on Harvest Temple, and lots more is actually redoing it, Stormy Addict's Awning. On the community side, these are one of the programs that don't fit into that neat little facade grant bucket. Christmas Town, last year, '18, we spent about $4,000. Lux aesthetic, that went into an upstairs space that we've had that vacant for years. We basically paid for the retrofitting so the company could move into that space. We funded the three downtown mural projects, there were three in total, at $14,000. Cooley Bay Brewery, we funded the installation of sound panels, because if you've ever been there, they go dead, it's pretty loud.
Thank you for that.
The Farmers Market, total cost for the year were $29,0867. Music in the Park, Fall Run, we repeated the funding we did a year before for a total of $8,500 for both of those. Current future projects, Christmas Town this year, our board very graciously upped our funding big time. We've won the double that. Downtown Latin Project, so those are the lights you see on top of the buildings. And yes, we have a few out, we have some balsas. But that was $3,000 for materials, we haven't paid the electrician yet, we have the bill that's going to be quite a bit more than that, but obviously worth it. And those are going to be on year-round, they're on photo sales, so they all come on about 6 o'clock at night.
Rodney, if I can stop you for just a second. I get in about 6:30 in the morning, and as I'm driving 121 West, and I'm about five miles out, these lights on the building across the street are my beacon to follow them.
You're welcome. The Lansing Police Department actually came to us with a unique project too, and we can't fund a lot for the police, but one thing we could fund, they wanted to paint and rewrap their Hummer for public advantage, educational purposes, that sort of thing. Legally, that's something we can do to compensate for that. And of course, our performance agreement with United Ag and Turf, AKA John Deere, that has been signed and sealed, and we are good to go. So total, we funded 38 total projects, just over $225,000. Year-to-date, this fiscal year is $87,670. And operating costs, I don't know, we're basically about the same, are $2,211. And that is it, any questions?
Thanks, Ray.
Well, it says, consider taking the action, but I don't know if we have any action that we need to take to approve that.
I think you actually technically approve it, because we have to hold a public hearing to rat it out on our end.
I'll make a motion for the community development capital improvement program that was just presented.
Do the motions, your second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor of the right hand? No attention to no notes, or... We will revert that to item number 13. Having the photos, the picture.
I printed it small.
A lot more stuff on there. It's going to be pretty awesome.
Yeah, this shows about a $45,000 per foot building. Sales in front, maintenance and mechanical in the back. Fire lanes that encompass the building for access. Two ramps, 1075 are located. Because the first ramp is right near the door, or where the ramp comes onto the front of the truck, they can't be within a certain distance, so there's a mutual access easement that goes to the south that allows traffic parked around to get in there. They get in, so when, once they reverse the ramp, it'll be in good shape, but this accommodates. That's why you see the two ramps close proximity. And then the areas, the areas outlined around the building are concrete parking. The other areas comply with the gravel display area as discussed previously, which will be behind the curb.
When did they want to break ground on us?
Yesterday.
Yes, please.
Do you want to motion, Steve?
Unless there's any further discussion. Any motion?
I want to find what it is.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve, have a motion to approve the site plan, and then is your second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your hand.
Mr. Comer, if I can, just recognize Rodney for his work on the John Deere project. He, I think he adopted Brody Pettit in this process to help him through the trials and tribulations of trying to get a business here. And this is a big deal for the city of Van Austin, for the CDC and the EDC. This, in the first couple of years, could be almost $200,000 a year in sales tax revenue to the city. So this is a monumental accomplishment, I pax off to Rodney and the CDC for supporting it.
My turn? Yes, Mr. Comer. Continue, please.
Thank you. My police announced a city plan job offer was extended and has been accepted. Mrs. Amy Matthews will report to work on January 4th, 2020. Amy brings extensive background in city planning to Van Austin, having served as a senior planner in Little Elm during its time of their rapid expansion and growth. She's currently the senior planner in Merchant Center, and she's excited to become a part of Van Austin. I hope you have an opportunity to meet her Friday night when we get together. Asphalt work on Kelly Lane West Jefferson has been completed. Crew is now busy making repairs to the improvements of Village Parkway, which was one of our higher priority projects. The only thing that will remain will be the striping requirements on Kelly Lane. Open early discussions with GTWA concerning the need that the city will have for a new water tower that will need to be operational in the next 24 to 36 months. It will go at Row Number Five, which is 121 West, about quarter of a mile on the north side of 121. So we're identifying what it is we need, and how much it will cost, and how we're going to pay for it, and to disperse recent changes to our impact fees. The city was, has submitted two grant applications, one for $150,000 and one for $750,000 to be used if funded for our downtown park. The downtown park is a $4 million project. My negotiations with Brisland, they've agreed to advance the city $2 million against their community development fees if we secure this $900,000. We'll have three-quarters of our needed money to build that project, and then with the $1,250 we received for household on housing development, we very well could be able to build that park with no impact on our community to tax revenue. The architectural firm WRA has been selected to conduct a feasibility study and site evaluations, or site evaluations for the proposed municipal complex. Funds for the study and the associated architectural work were appropriated at the time the land was purchased. Our goal is to have this work completed by March of 2020. I will be on leave December 23rd through January 1st. I'll be back in the office on Thursday, January 2nd. Also be out sometime for a week in January for some math work I've been putting off for some period of time, and I'll update the board once that time is confirmed. That's it.
Thanks for coming.
Any other questions, or perhaps we could pause?
Thank y'all for everybody's coming. I know Robert usually says it more than I do, but thank y'all, to all of our volunteers always, and everything they do. Friday, the CDC, a great job downtown with everything, so really appreciate all of the work. It really shows. So, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Neil?
Just thank y'all for coming out. Just a mimic what they said, thank you to all our volunteers, all our city staff. Especially this time of year with everything that's going on, it can get busy, hectic, there's a lot of stuff that can happen, so just appreciate everybody's patience. Van Austin looks great, and we just, you know, all of our team members and all of the city volunteers have just done a fantastic job with the decorations, the parks so far, the events, the Saturday parade. So the Christmas parade, everybody come, join us for that, hopefully, allows some decent weather. And, yeah, so just thank everybody for coming out.
A couple things, the change is very easy, and I need change, don't get me wrong, sometimes it's necessary, but it can fall apart. And that's what I'm saying, sometimes it is necessary to do that. Second thing, you know, it's that time of year, guys, a lot of people don't have to, but... So make sure to reach out to those that you know and check in on them, and make sure they're not in a dark place, if you don't know, unless you ask.
Since everybody's stolen my thunder, thank you, everybody. I'll thank them again. Thank our citizens, our concerned citizens for showing up to take part in the meeting. Thank all of our wonderful volunteers. I want to thank our city staff. Of course, responders aren't here, but shout out to them also. Would also like to, you know, say thank you, thank you. That's two of those important words. And also, like Marla was saying, it's, yeah, it's the Christmas season, and remember, there's those that aren't as fortunate as we are. And keep that in mind, that, you know, if you can spread a little Christmas cheer one way or another, please do so. It's good for our community.
You didn't say about landing a...
Oh, my God, man. Okay, okay. And Ray Jen sitting right there in front of me.
Where's the water?
Yes, yes.
You're worried about people stealing that?
Yes. The parade is this Saturday, 2 o'clock, and afterwards, it...
On the casino?
Yeah, at 3:30. Yeah, at three-thirty. Huh? Oh, three o'clock.
You gotta get sent out here to go hack.
I got you, yeah, yeah. The grand old man in the red, red light suit is gonna be here, yeah, take pictures with the kids at Dorothy Fielder Park.
And if you have some kids that are afraid of Santa, we are doing red truck pictures as well. So, we know Santa, though, so we don't have the big man, we just have the red truck.
There's also a ceremony at the cemetery at eleven.
Eleven.
Oh, you have that?
Take the thunder.
Eleven o'clock.
Yes, there's eleven.
Reeds Across America, eleven o'clock.
A lot, that's a lot, okay.
I have a, to anybody else in this, or, I have a letter from Mr. Hackler, who's visited with us before, and I don't completely understand everything, but I think what this, this chief complaint is, is perhaps a lack of any effort working during special events. We'll just bring that to the manager's attention, I'll pass this letter on, and hopefully, it's... Did anybody suggest that we have on our class, that the high school paint signs in their, in the front of the, by the way? So, perhaps, once we will direct this letter to the staff, and they can, well, maybe understand this, this, this complaint. Once again, Reeds Across America, which will be at Van Alstine Cemetery, eleven o'clock on Saturday midnight. You can go there, and then you can go to the parade at two.
Is it the same route as the local?
I don't know.
It will.
Then lining up at the...
No, no, we'll start at Sanford.
Oh, that's right.
We'll start at Sanford and go south on five, turn onto Marshall, and then turn left onto Main.
And Marshall and Main. It's gonna be all, it's gonna be locked off.
Yeah, kinda just in that Dorothy Fielder.
I was just gonna say, between, that'd be at eleven o'clock and the parade at two o'clock, shop and eat local, here in Van Alstine, while you're waiting.
I agree.
Okay, I think that should just do it, and we want to thank the staff of our, of our work and... So, with that said, we will see you on, on January the... We're gonna be January fourteenth, so, you know, introductions, everybody have a Merry Christmas.